This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune and in the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2014, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2014, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The fire exits are to my left and my right; you are right and left respectively. I would ask members of the public, our guests from public service, and members of the day to please speak into the microphones, and for anyone who may have a need assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Denenberg, thank you for joining us. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Doblin?
Here.
Councilman Malay?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Who will be here but is not here yet. Okay. All right, so this evening's plan is this. We've invited public service to come because there are a number of questions that members of the public had, that we as a governing body have, about the spate of recent power outages, responses, and so on. So we wanted to make public service directly accessible to you to answer our questions and address comments and concerns as directly as possible. And the bulk of the meeting will be devoted to that. So we've streamlined our agenda. However, before we get to the public service meeting, the public service portion of the meeting, I would, well, PSENG portion, it's all public service. So before we get to them, we have us. And I would like to, I believe we have representatives from Main Street tonight, so thank you for joining us. One of you may not, well, forget it. You guys have a Main Street minute for us?
We do.
Well, Jenny and Rebecca, it's your time.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Jenny Chapman, and I'm the chairperson for Main Street Highland Park. And just a sec, sorry, I have to, you know, our nose on our phones. I just wanted to, we have a lot of great things happening in Highland Park, but I know we want to keep it free. I wanted to say a few quick words about, to thank Jim Polos, who is stepping down from Main Street Highland Park Board. Jim Polos brought to Main Street Highland Park his experience as a longtime resident of Highland Park and as a business owner and property manager. He was a constant source of wonderful ideas and actively involved himself in improving our downtown. We'll miss working with Jim regularly at Main Street and look forward to his return. Hint, hint, Jim, if you're watching. He's promised to remain a support to Main Street Highland Park when needed. On behalf of the Main Street Highland Park Board and volunteers, we thank you, Jim Polos, for your volunteership and service. And then, I'd like to introduce our new executive director, Rebecca Hirsch. Rebecca Hirsch is a licensed urban planner who studied at Carnegie Mellon and Columbia University. She's a Highland Park resident. And Rebecca started as a Main Street volunteer. She was our events coordinator after that and organized, along with volunteers, I always have to make that very clear, we're run by volunteers, along with volunteers the most successful arts festival yet, the wonderful Halloween on the Avenue, and our three December events. And since October, Rebecca has acted as executive director. In January, she became our executive director, and so now I'd like to give Rebecca a moment to tell you about a few things that we're doing. Thank you. Really quickly, I know I only have one minute. We just completed a successful partnership with the state of New Jersey for our NJ350 pop-up shop. It's part of the celebration for New Jersey's 50th anniversary. We had a temporary pop-up shop last year in the Main Street offices. Is this working?
Yeah. You're doing fine. It's not on?
We, in spite of the horrible weather, we had a great run in the shop. We sold merchandise from over 20 merchants around town and also from the New Jersey State Museum. We partnered with the Rutgers University Press for a book signing with Highland Park resident Mark Mappen. And, it's not on. I'll just talk about it.
Wait, wait, wait. We'll give you a 10-second extension.
And we had a wine tasting with Pinots and two nights of live music with a Highland Park folk band, so it was really, it was a great thing for our downtown, we think, even in spite of the horrible weather. It was pretty successful. And then really quickly, we're actively planning for our number of events in May, the 5K and the Street Fair, which is Sunday, May 18th, and also planting days on May 15th and 17th. Those are the next two, three big things coming up, so if anyone's interested in working on those or sponsoring them, let me know. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. Now, even though it's not part of Main Street, Gail, Beryl Mittler has an update for us on Park Partners?
Yes, I do. I'm very pleased to announce that our first-ever Park Partners program was a huge success. The Park Partners program, you may recall, is a grant give-back program that was sponsored by the borough. The program offered, offers up to $2,000 for programs that will benefit the community. We had 20 applications from community members, of which 14 were invited to present their ideas to the community residents. The voting on favorite programs was actually held at our senior rec center on February 9th, and we had over 170 people show up to vote, which was phenomenal. I'm here today to tell you the winners of the categories, at least the projects. There were five categories. The first, the environment, and the winning project was Raritan River Walking Trail. Sustainable Highland Park will build and maintain a walking trail of approximately 900 feet at the environmental education center along the bank of the, banks of the Raritan River. In the arts area, the Highland Park Outdoor Movie Theater won. Last year, Highland Park showed outdoor films in the municipal parking lot between Second and Third Avenues. The program was successful, but due to licensing issues, the film choices were limited. This grant will cover the cost of licenses for the films, allowing them to purchase a wider variety of movies for our residents, and thank you to Main Street for working with us on that. In the area of universal access or health and wellness, cutting out hunger was our winning project. Two Highland Park students began a program in which they collected coupons and used donations to buy food for the Highland Park Food Pantry. In 2013, they donated $2,300 worth of food for the Highland Park pantry. They will use the grant to increase their donations throughout the year and help publicize their program to attract additional donors. In the area of safety, Stay Informed was the winning project. Red Cross emergency radios. Approximately 55 Red Cross emergency solar-powered radios will be purchased and given to disabled and seniors in the community. The radios are especially relevant after our experiences with Hurricane Sandy and several power outages this winter. This is a lead-in to you. In the area of culture and diversity, Think Highland Park was the winner. This is a program started by Highland Park High School students, so you see, we have two programs that came from our high school students, which is really fantastic. It's a two-part program in which they will utilize the Internet to create a collage or interactive online discussion about race, and then will sponsor community planned discussions about race and diversity. The grant recipients have to complete their programs within one year, and we look forward to seeing the results of all of their hard work. Congratulations to all the winners.
Thank you very much. Okay, you guys from PSENG are ready? Not so fast. You're coming. See, Gail, I get to make the introductions around here most of the time. Okay, so just by way of introduction, and I want to keep my own remarks brief, A, because I said there were no reports this evening, in the interest of primarily having this conversation, there are just a few things I want to do to sort of set the stage and the tone for this, if you will. And I would also mention that I noticed Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin was nice enough to join us, so Assemblywoman Pinkin, thank you very much for coming. Tom Lynch is here from Assemblyman Dinan's office, and I am still working on and with Senator Barnes coordinating another meeting with some leaders at PSENG, myself, somebody from the Board of Public Utilities, et cetera. And Senator Barnes unfortunately had a fire in his law office recently, so he's been a bit displaced, but he is getting back to business, and that is still on his radar, so that will happen. Anyway, I am, we thought it would be worthwhile to have this discussion for a few reasons. First of all, there are some general categories of concern that I've expressed to my connections at PSENG on your behalf, as well as on behalf of the governing body. Primarily those relate to, one, the overall questions related to the status and stability of the infrastructure. Can we expect the power to be on or not? People didn't used to ask questions like this. I realize now with the storms and with what's happened in Highland Park over the last several months, that's certainly something that people worry about or think about more than they used to. So whether or not PSENG reassures us, it's up to them, but I felt they should have the opportunity to share directly with us, with no filtration intermediaries, with the entire community via HPTV, exactly what happened, what is happening, what we can expect to happen going forward in terms of the status of our electric infrastructure here. Beyond that, clearly there are issues related, as far as I'm concerned, in a few different areas. One is communication, which although perhaps is getting better, it's something that you've read, many of you I'm sure, my comments on Facebook, what's been published on the website, whether you get it by email, Nixle, Twitter, whatever the case may be, if it's the post on Facebook. We've done our best to try to transfer, really, the information that we get and share it with you as quickly as we possibly can, once we have some sense of its accuracy. So sometimes when we're not responding right away, it's because we're waiting to try to get accurate information to share with you. Notwithstanding that, we are very sensitive to the fact that you may get a communication from PSENG, which in no way relates in any way, shape, or form to the communication I either have just sent or am about to send. So there's that, if you will disconnect, and I'm hoping that we can talk a little about that this evening. Third big issue, which I know is a major source of frustration, angst, et cetera, relates to customer service. Customer service in a couple of ways, and by the way, the people I've been dealing with at PSENG, this is not news to them, we've had this conversation with them, and I think they're prepared to discuss this this evening, that there are a couple of things. One, I find it, and forgive me, but I have to say this, insulting and dismissive that when people are sitting home cold, dark, fearful, because the power's off, they don't know when it's coming on, they don't know if it's coming on, although at some point they know it will, and hopefully it won't be three months later, that there's nothing more frustrating than calling PSENG, not being able to get through to a live person. If you speak to a live person, they don't know what's going on, they're alternately dismissive, they hang up on you, you don't know if you're going to get a call back, even though you might get a call back, and you're just literally left in the dark in more ways than one. So, you know, if I may, and I'm not into grandstanding, I think that's outrageous. There's no other way to describe it. It's frustrating, it's insulting. It certainly doesn't speak well, you know, for customer service in general, but it gets exacerbated when you're told one thing by the customer service reps, who are best guessing, and then you look at the website, and the website tells you something completely different, and then when you know your power's still off, you get an automated phone call back that says, "We believe your power's on." There are all these different issues, so I'm hoping that we can get some clarity on some of that as well. And the last thing, which I understand will not be dealt with on an individual basis, but certainly from a process and procedural standpoint tonight, will be the issue of claims. Some of you have legitimate financial concerns, or I'm not dismissing anybody's financial concerns. Some of you have either filed or planned to file based on financial hardship, damage, whatever the case may be, based on your experience with the power outage and PSENG, and I believe that PSENG plans to deal with that on a one-to-one basis in specific, but I believe they're going to make some general comments about process, procedure, et cetera, this evening, so we've asked them to address that. So I think those are the primary areas that are going to be discussed. Oh, and by the way, just on that last point, and I have said this to PSENG, it's not just that you have a claim as individuals, we feel we have a claim on your behalf as taxpayers. And we have communicated that, and we do expect to submit some sort of claim to PSENG for things like police overtime, Public Works overtime, et cetera, because candidly, when the lights go out around here, it's all hands on deck. It definitely is disruptive to our planning, it's obviously disruptive to the quality of life in the community, it can present serious safety issues on a number of different levels. As long as the chief is here, I do have to say, to his credit and to the credit of the Police Department, I am not aware of any serious crime or injury that took place during any of the nine power outages that we experienced. That's a tribute to the residents of Highland Park for their ability to keep calm under extreme duress and extremely challenging circumstances, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize all of the police fire and first aid for the outstanding job that they did under those extremely adverse conditions. Having said that, in fairness to Don Rich and the team at Public Works, a number of these power outages came during or on the heels of or in conjunction with major storms. So roads were plowed in the dark, which in and of itself is no small feat, because it's hard enough to plow the streets when the lights are on, and his crews have worked pretty much end to end, I'd say, it feels like almost since the beginning of January. So I want to say a couple of things just before I turn this over to PSENG, and I'm sorry for the length of this, but I think it's important to set the stage this way. The first thing is, some of you believe Highland Park is falling apart. I don't believe that's the case at all. We've had a series of things that have happened around here that I think nobody could predict, nobody would have predicted. I have to say that when I signed on as mayor, if you would have asked me for the things I would have most wished for, it wouldn't have been nine power outages and six snowstorms in the space of five weeks. That sort of comes with the territory, and I'm not complaining about it. Having said that, I don't mind doing my job, I don't like doing your job at all. I don't envy you guys, but, you know, we've got to come up with a better delineation of who does what around here, okay? So just in the interest of the public record, I do not have a switch in my office that allows me to turn the power on and off, although I have had friends tease me about that. We do everything we can to advocate on your behalf and make sure that you're heard. Beyond that, there's relatively little we can do. When we say call PSENG, you're helping us, and we're trying to help you help us, and vice versa. I am extremely, extremely sensitive to the issues that you face, even though it may not seem that way, and I can assure you that there is nothing that I have read on Facebook, nothing that I've gotten by email, nothing that the council has shared with me as sentiment, anything that anybody has said to me as a passerby related to any of these issues that I have not shared directly either with the Board of Public Utilities and/or with the people at public service. So, I'm sensitive, sympathetic, and empathetic to your anger, your frustration, your anxiety, your fear, the uncertainty. I'm hopeful we'll be able to resolve some of that tonight, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to plant some seeds for improved communication and better working relations as we move forward. And in that spirit, I would only say, now that I got all that out, thank you for ready event, and it'll be your turn in just a second after it's their turn. The way I'd like to handle this is PSENG has prepared some formal remarks. I'd like to enable them, give them the opportunity to say what they feel they need to say, just to try to explain kind of where things are, what's happened, and so on. I'm sure that will eliminate some questions and raise others, and that's perfectly fine. So the nature of the discussion then, you know, I'm going to open for public comment, we'll go as long as we need to go. I'm assuming the bulk of the people that are here want to have this dialogue about PSENG. If you have something else to say, that's fine, we'll have a second period of limited public comment afterwards. But the bulk of this evening's meeting is really devoted to the conversation, and I'm hoping that it'll be civil, dignified, as it always is when we have these types of issues to raise between ourselves and our representatives from public service. So Frank, do you want to kick this off? So this is Frank Lucchese. Frank, do you want to introduce yourself and the people that are here with you?
I will. I'll address it, and then when we get to the presentation portion, if you don't mind, why, it's numbers and counsel and...
Yes, you've got to speak into the microphone. Is that on?
Yes.
Okay. Frank, I think you can, there's a green light there on the bottom when the button is pushed, right?
Got it. It's my debut for American Idol. Okay, good evening, mayor, members of council, is this on?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here today and present. My name is Frank Lucchese, I'm Regional Public Affairs Manager for PSENG. Part of my territory that I cover is Middlesex County, so I am your Public Affairs Manager. My position, I am the liaison between the elected officials, both locally and legislatively, so that is my role within my territory. With me this evening are my colleagues from PSENG, and I just want to give a quick introduction to them. I'll make some remarks, and then we'll get into our presentation today. From our Central Division Operations, that's the electric division, that serves Highland Park. At the end, we have Matt Reeger, who is the Division Operations Manager. We have Jim Rigler, who's the Distribution Manager for Engineering and Resources. From our Customer Solutions Group, we have William Nash, Bill Nash, who's the Director of our Customer Contact. Next to Bill is Ed Zizali, he's the Regional Manager of Large Customer Support. And from our Corporate Communications Group is Karen Johnson, she's the Director of our Corporate Communications. So that's our team here today. We're here this evening to give you an update on the Edison Substation, a substation that serves approximately 5,000 residents in Highland Park and Edison, and a substation that unfortunately sustained a critical fire on January 11th that caused not only significant plant damage, but caused major inconvenience to those customers that that substation serves. We sincerely understand and are sympathetic to that inconvenience that it caused, and to the residents of Highland Park, we truly apologize for that. Tonight, we want to have a presentation for you that is productive, and although we understand that the level of frustration your residents have are high, our goal tonight is to educate you and give you a better understanding of the issues we were faced with, the complexity of the system operations, and the issues that sometimes we are faced when we're doing repairs and restoration to our infrastructure. Mayor, you mentioned it before, in terms of format, we've prepared a presentation, we have an agenda, we're going to go Division Operations, we'll make their presentation to give you an update of pre, during, and post what's going on with the Edison Substation. We will have a conversation about customer contact and customer solutions and customer service. I think at the end of the presentation from Operations, we can have a dialogue for questions while it's relatively, you know, open to everybody, and questions on everyone's mind. And then, as we start to flow through the process, if that's okay with council and you, mayor, we'll wrap up, and then we can open up for more questions and comment, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay?
Sounds like a way to start.
When we get the screen down, we'll get the presentation up there, and we may have to squeeze in, so the members of council and...
Yeah.
There's a hook. Ah, there it goes. So you don't think we're doing it, huh?
Listen to this. It's a hook. Yeah. Yeah. Now? Yeah.
There you go. Everybody can see that, okay? Okay, so this is Matt Reeger, who is our Division Operations Manager, and we're going to start running through the slides. Everybody can see what's going on there? Oh, you got your cover right.
Good evening, everybody. I'll just give background on my position. As you mentioned, I'm the Division Operations Manager. Basically, I'm responsible for the 24-hour restoration of customer outages. People at work, you know, the teleshooters, the operators that work, shift work, they're out in the streets, cutting wires, putting customers back in service, restoring substations. I'll just repeat what I said, if you all can hear. My name's Matt Reeger, I'm the Division Operations Manager for Central Division. We're headquartered in Somerset, New Jersey, and my role is to manage the 24-hour operations of Central Division, which is Somerset, Middlesex, and Union Counties in New Jersey. And basically, the people at work for me respond to all customer outages. We restore stations, we cut wires, we make the area safe, and we get customers back in power. So basically, I'm going to start with this event, which really generated from Edison Substation. Edison Substation was built in the 1950s. It is located in Clark Avenue in Edison, which is north of here on Route 27. It's in Edison, New Jersey. Basically, if you look at the top right, there's an arrow shot of Edison Substation from, you know, straight above, one on angle. And basically, this is what we call a Class C Substation. Like I mentioned before, it was built in the 1950s, about 90 minutes throughout the state of New Jersey. It's a very reliable station, it's been in our system for a while. If you look on the top left, there's two incoming supply lines, there are 26,000 volts. They come from the touch and switching station in Edison of Route 1 North at the intersection of Route 287, it's a large switching station. So those two 26,000 lines come to feed Edison. We take that 26,000 volts and we put it through power station transformers, which step the voltage down to 4,000 volts. That in turn, on the bottom, feeds individual circuits. These are 4,000 volts, and this is what's in your, on your streets. That's what we call distribution voltage, and that's what, there's actually six of these circuits that are fed from Edison Substation. This is a very simplified diagram of the station, just to give you a, you know, a pictural of the station in terms of how the electric flows, but actually, there's a lot of redundancy in the station. We have two supply lines, two transformers, everything's redundant, so when any single piece of equipment fails, it allows you to reroute power and get customers back through that redundancy. Again, it's a very good design in our system. This is a picture of the area served by Edison Substation. Although it might be hard to see, there's, I drew a red border around the both towns, Edison and Highland Park. As mentioned before, it's about 5,100 customers fed from Edison Substation, and basically the load, if you look at it, kind of goes along Route 27, on the east and west portion of Route 27. Most of the load from Edison Substation is in Highland Park, there's some in the north, as you can see, you know, up here in Edison, but most of it is fed from, is beat Highland Park. So what happened on January 11th? What we had on January 11th, we had a catastrophic failure of a piece of substation equipment. This is a breaker, that's a transformer breaker, it's a 4,000 volt breaker, it actually exploded and went on fire. There's, although the pictures are hard to see, in the top right, there was a station flyer that the Edison Fire Department had to come, they had to de-energize the station, they had to put water on the fire to put it out. In addition to the catastrophic failure of the transformer breaker, the actual station transformer failed. That's shown up on the top left, there's an arrow pointing to it. That's the powered transformer that steps the voltage from 26,000 volts to 4,000 volts. Both those pieces of equipment failed. Unfortunately, when that 4KV breaker failed, that actually damaged a lot of the equipment in here. In addition to that, we had a lot of contamination from the fire department and putting the fire out, they had to put water on it. So the station was never put back into service. This is typically, this is unusual for PSENG. When we have a failure of a piece of equipment, you know, 99% of the time, we're able to get the station back by isolating that piece of equipment and using the redundant design to restore the station. But the decision was made here that that station cannot be restored, and we had to look to alternative means to get power back to Edison and Highland Park. So how do you restore power to Highland Park and Edison? Because damage inside the station, we cannot use redundancy. The other thing that compounded this, there was no external ties from this 4,000 volt system to other substations. Edison and Highland Park fed from this station is 13,000 volt system, so in the middle is 4,000 volts, so there's no external ties. Typically, we can tie stations together because it's a network, so we have, on other locations, there's substations we can tie together. So if Station A is down, we can tie the circuits to Station B. We did not have that flexibility here because of the way this system is. So what we had to do was we had installed pad mount transformers. These are actually mobile transformers that we put along the neighborhood streets in Edison and Highland Park. There's actually six of them in service right now. What we did is we tied the 13,000 volt system, we stepped it down to 4,000 volts to power the load at Edison Substation. Initially, there was three of these transformers installed, and then that was done, the urgency to get... We did not have that flexibility here because of the way the system is. So what we had to do was we had installed pad mount transformers. These are actually mobile transformers that we put along the neighborhood streets in Edison and Highland Park. There's actually six of them in service right now. What we did is we tied the 13,000-volt system. We stepped it down to 4,000 volts to power the load at Edison Substation. Initially, there was three of these transformers installed. And then that was done in the urgency to get power back. And then, as the days went by, PS installed more of these transformers, up to a total of six, to increase the reliability of the system. So basically, as we mentioned before, those six Edison circuits, each one right now has its own 13,000-volt circuit, its own individual transformer feeding that 4,000-volt circuit. We also had a reinforced 2500 feet of wire composed along South Fourth Avenue in Highland Park. This was done because we had wire problems. We had failures of the overhead wire. The only way to correct that problem was to actually replace the wire. This is a picture of a pad mount installation on First Avenue and Johnson in Highland Park. This is basically the 13,000-volt system. This is the 4,000-volt system. We ran wires and tied the 13,000-volt system to this transformer, which, as I mentioned before, stepped it down to 4,000 volts and we supplied the circuits. This is the same picture of the Edison Substation service area. And the little circles surrounding the borders of the load that's fed at Edison Sub represents the pad mount transformer installations. So on either side of your territory, we have the 13,000 volts. We tie those transformers and we're powering up Highland Park and Edison right now with those pad mount installations. This is all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Jim, which is going to talk about where we're going from now in terms of short and long-term plans to put our station back to normal. Is there any other question to have before I sit down? You can certainly ask. If you want, I wait to hear.
My first thing is, one thing I can say is, since the folks that actually go out and string the wires, apparently he's working for you. I just have to tell you, and I tried to communicate this to each group personally when I was out seeing them, how much we appreciate the work they did in adverse conditions. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of gratitude from the people in Highland Park, the people that actually have to work and smell the rain, wind, and pockets, you know, overnight to do all that work. So we're incredibly grateful for that. And I want to make sure that we please do a little bit of that to them. Second thing, I've not been able to get answers to a few of these questions. One, if you could clarify, I understand that it is redundancy. And yet, the redundancy failed in this case. So I'm wondering if you, before I ask any other questions, could you speak to that a little bit? And I'll move to the next question.
This plan right here, the pad mounts, that's actually a standard PSCNG restoration?
I'm going back to the fact that you said we have the six circuits. And theoretically, that means that there's like duplicate six. So if the initial six don't work, there's six you can switch over to regular substation. So the question is, you know, is that the case? And are you saying the redundant system was as badly damaged as Plan B was as badly damaged as Plan A? Before we even get to the plan, I'm curious.
There is, I'll go back to the station design a little bit. Again, this is very simplified. But if I showed you the detailed version of this, there is a lot of redundancy. There's additional bus work here. There's all this, there's what we call tie feeders and spare equipment. So not only do we have the six feeders, we have what they call spare equipment, which looks also another piece of redundant equipment. And the outside plant, once you get outside the station on these systems, there's tie feeder circuits, which tie all six circuits back to each other. So there's flexibility within that, within that design to, from our experience in PSCNG, to be able to restore, like I said, 99% of any single piece of equipment failure in that station. Also, what you don't show is here, there's disconnects all along here. So even if these two canopiers store, you could open up and restore, you know, 80% of the station. And the last 20%, you could tie within these circuits themselves. There's tie points. But unfortunately, with this failure, because it was catastrophic in nature, and it's the first that, you know, I've experienced, and I've been here 26 years, where I've not been able to get a station back. We actually have four other stations similar to this in my division have a piece of equipment fail because of the weather, that we're able to quickly isolate the equipment and get the station back. So that's the way, that's the way these stations operate. You know, they have a lot of means to isolate and peel off the bad equipment to get the station back. This, and also compounded by this, was the fire that hit the station. And the fire department, we had doused the whole thing in water to get it out. So, I mean, we just made the decision that we didn't want to energize it. And I think, based upon some other failures, when we were trying to energize equipment, there were some people injured too. So we made a conscious choice here not to re-energize the equipment because when you do do that, sometimes you can have another failure, and it could cause personal injuries. So we really made a conscious choice here, very conservative, and not try to even attempt to energize this.
Well, I'd just like to follow on with redundancy, just to inject a little bit. Because it seems to me that there's the, within the, within station redundancy that you talked about, and it's apparently the damage is too great, from what you're saying, to go further with that station. But you also mentioned that there's a type of, I don't know if you call it redundancy in trade or not, but it sounds to me like redundancy where you, excuse me, where you would have other stations in many places that could do it. But because of the larger sort of semi-regional, or whatever you want to call it, scale, because of that, Highland Park and Edison were basically on their own in the wickedness set. Is that correct?
Well, what happens over here is, I mean, this 4KV station was the way our system was built. I mean, as started as this and that, as load increased, this type of design doesn't support the load growth. So we have different systems put into place. And one of them was a 13,000-volt system, which is a different design, different station. And that, over time, starts to carry most of the loads. You wind up with pockets of older stations that are still in existence, that are still operating, and they get surrounded by another type of system. So that interstation tying one station to the other doesn't, didn't work here because this is an older station that was, became surrounded by another class, another design. So that type of redundancy, interstation redundancy, does not exist here.
So going forward, will we, will we have a new type of station that's going to be compatible with the other stations and therefore redundant?
Jim is going to speak to, there is a long, there is a long-term initiative right now in place that was generated from events like this that we'll talk some more about. But I mean, I'll...
So I have one other question for you before we move on to this. And if I can hear my questions, because I just have one other question because I'm confused. The communications that we got from PSCNG, and what we shared with the public, was that after these continued failures of two of the six circuits, that the ultimate fix was to turn two of the circuits back on at the substation itself. You know, we may have glossed over this. You said effectively now, we've got six transformers powering each of the six different circuits. So are those two circuits that kept failing back on the substation at this point or not?
No, they're not. They're actually back on the pad mount transformers.
Okay, so in other words, what PSCNG told us then, and what we communicated with the public, is not true. We went back and...
We went back on the station temporarily because, let me show you. I was going to show you, I forgot one slide at the end. This multiple outage circuit, there was two circuits that we kept sustaining outages on. And I mentioned about the reinforced wire. As a temporary fix, while we were installing the pad mounts, we actually put those two circuits back onto the substation. And to do that, we had to stop work in the station. We had to get all the people out because there was that looming safety issue we had with re-energizing the equipment. We energized those two circuits temporarily, which is that shaded area, which where all the multiple outages took place over several days. That station equipment was re-energized, so we could do that outside plant line work. We had to run a lot of wire. We did that just to stop all that, you know, the recurring outages on those circuits. But those two circuits have been since been de-energized in the station and put back onto those pad mount transformers. And that's the way it's going to remain while the work continues in that station. Yes?
Was root cause ever determined as to why the transformer breakery exploded?
The root cause, there's been a team put together by our senior leadership in the company that has an outside consultant that's looking at all our failures to kind of determine the cause. But we're, you know, pretty sure it was a result of the large temperature swings. We had extreme, you know, cold, warm cold. That, those extreme temperatures created a lot of moisture inside the ductwork. And we think that's what caused the failures, that we call temperature, temperature inversion.
Now, is there a periodic maintenance schedule to assess the conditions of the station from town to town?
Yeah, there is defined maintenance on all these stations for breakers. There's a maintenance schedule, and it's, we have defined programs where it's done by, you know, in so many years, we do maintenance. And there's also an asset management program that looks at data and readings based upon meters and gauge the station, and it's like condition-based. When the readings, like on a transformer oil, gas, and oil readings, if they're indicating a trend negative, we do maintenance. It's like an asset management-based philosophy versus just going based upon number of years you do maintenance.
So I guess the reason this was categorized as catastrophic was there was simply no way to know that this would happen?
No, I don't think, I don't think it was predictable, no, just absolutely not.
Well, I had, I had alarm damage on my business, and I filed a claim. And I was told repeatedly that there's a chance the claim would not be honored if this was considered an act of God. Based on what you said, I mean, I don't know what the legal definition of that is, but it sounds like it just happened, and it was not nothing really, weather-wise, that hit it that day and could make it blow up. Unless, you know, you have a different view of it.
My first question is...
Well, would you consider this failure an act of God?
It's an equipment failure.
If you file the claim, they tell you a few times, we're not going to obtain the claims. This was an act of God. I'm not an attorney. I don't have the legal definition of that.
I'm an attorney. I look at it as an equipment failure, like a motor or something exploded. And that, it's equipment failure maybe. It's not something that we predict or avoid or...
I mean, it wasn't an earthquake, it wasn't lightning, things like that, I guess.
Well, that's why, if I could, that's why during the claim process, and the mayor and I have had this conversation, it's, you know, for not to compromise the individual claims at best, as we always do, to allow the claim, just like if it's a regular insurance claim or anything else, to deal directly with our claims group, which I, you know, we'll talk about it a little bit later. But I supplied the mayor with a, you know, not only the website, but the ability to download forms and file your claim. Claims, we had this conversation and...
In the interest of clarity, I have that today, which is what we have. I'll have that in the day or so. I'm not holding out on anybody, I promise.
And that's true. And I sent it to him this morning. But again, you know, the best way to go about it is to really deal one-on-one. It's tough to put, and if I, I mean, it's tough to put, you know, whether they believe it's an act of God, or if it's, you know, they view it as equipment failure. I think the claims, you know, just like the insurance world, they're going to have their definitions. And that's all under by tariff. And they may say things to you, our tariff for us is our operating bylaws that is set forth by the Board of Public Utilities, and that's how we operate. So we call it a tariff. And there's certain things in there that we can and cannot do based on the guidelines that the Board of Public Utilities puts forward to us. So that's why, when the mayor and I spoke about the claims process, we felt it was better that, well, I felt it was better, and he agreed that. We do that on more of a one-on-one basis. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Two questions. One's, I guess, a simple question, and that is, those big ugly boxes that are gated in and on our side streets, how long are they going to be there?
Several more months. I mean, Jim's going to go more detail into where we're going with the station for a long time. That, he'll cover that in a minute.
Okay. And you mentioned this particular facility is from the 1950s. You also mentioned that you thought that perhaps the explosion was due to the climate changes back and forth, weather-wise. Given that we're headed in that direction for the long term, how are you going to avoid that sort of thing going forward, or is that the future topic?
That's probably the assessment of what happened. Because this is not quite isolated case. This happened in my division, in four stations, and then throughout the state, you had other stations, exact design, same thing. There was failures of equipment, not catastrophic like this, but it was shutdowns, and they had to do similar restoration. So there's a consultant and a team put together that's going to look at all these failures, the commonality of them, and what to do short and long term. And it's a multi, there's a lot of different pieces to that solution.
If I could, and correct me if I'm wrong, and when we talk about the temperature inversions, if you recall during that time, from January to early February, the equipment's used to, it's used to running, and it does adapt to temperature changes. But we were experiencing a 40-degree day, and then it went to a 0-degree day, and then back to a 20-degree day, back to a 0, back to a 40. So it was that vast temperature expansions that really we have not experienced that widely in the past that, so that's the inversions that we're talking about.
Right, but my point is, with the climate change that most of us believe is really happening, that's going to be, what, a future, it's like on a regular basis? So, you know, I just want to feel assured that you're thinking about those kinds of things.
Yeah, I'm going to touch on that, but I don't want Matt to set me up like I have a lot of answers for you because the team is still working on. So, you know, we're waiting for their final report. But we did put a team together, does have some outside consultants on it, so it's not just called the service. We're not checking on our own stuff, you know, our folks from the outside. And we have to, you know, seriously look at, you know, some of these stations are 60 years old, 70 years old, they're stations older than this. And, you know, we have to have a, have to have obviously a long-term plan in place. That's what we're going to do. In this case, this one is what we call, it's an island, surrounded by 13KV, okay, which limits obviously what we can do quickly. So that's all part of the process that we have to look at. You know, for the Asian stations, we have to look at, you know, the fact that these are, you know, some of these are islands, you know, the Asian equipment. So there's a lot involved. We're hoping to have, we're hoping to have a report out the end of next month. Not out, hopefully, we're going to have a report for us to review to say, yeah, that makes sense, okay, you know, these are the steps we need to take.
I have one last question. Not related to what happened there, but perhaps related to it. Many of us throughout Highland Park experience frequent, I don't know if you call them brownouts, when the electricity goes off and then back on after a minute or so. When you run a business in town, as I do, and your computer shuts down in the middle of everything, it's a real pain. But is that, are these brownouts or tiny blackouts due to anything in particular that we should be aware of?
I mean, is it some in recent or just in general?
All the time. There was one today.
Actually, and the increase has been significant post Sandy, post last year, for the work that that was done, probably into that, on a regular basis.
No, I, I mean, whether it's, when other lines operate, like I mentioned before, a touch and switch, sometimes if there could be a totally unrelated circuit or station that has a failure, it causes a disturbance, depending on the sensitivity of the equipment. You know, you can't feel that as a leak or an outage or whatever.
You're saying it's free blood?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a check. That's a person.
I'll jot down a note to get sure. I just, I have one thing to say, yeah. And I don't want to sound like a booker. So I promise I'm not keeping score. But in a relatively short time, this is second major surprise I got. Because I don't know what happens when Frank talks to you, when Frank talks to me. But, and Frank, forgive me. When he tells me, and I tell the residents, we're probably looking at four to six weeks on this sort of temporary pad transformer system. Because that's what I'm being, that's what we communicated to them. When people want to know, I said, PSC, we said about four to six weeks. It sounds like nothing of the sort. You know, and at the same time, you know, we have no clue. You said, now you've got a consultant involved that's going to make these recommendations. None of this was communicated to us. What was communicated to us was, you know, we're going to go and repair this thing. We're going to get this thing back on light. I mean, you know, literally internally, the right hand is not talking to the left.
Oh, we know how, we're making...
Well, maybe you guys are talking to each other. But I got 14,000 people that I have to communicate to. And it's more than a little bit upsetting to hear one thing for six weeks. Tell the public that, and now hear that something completely different is once it works. And if you don't think that that's dead wrong, come do my... And if you don't think that that's dead wrong, come do my job for a while, because I understand how difficult your job is, but what you're doing is not right, because you're not being truthful with us, or you're not caring enough to make sure that we really know what affects us, so that we can make our plans accordingly, that's just plain wrong, and it's not acceptable. And I really think that needs to change. And I think that if we're going to improve our working relationship, that has to start right now. Because I don't know how we go from four weeks to three months, and I'm asking questions like, are you leaning on your suppliers to get, you know, why does it take three months to get a report like this? Why can't it be done in a couple of weeks? I assume that you're a big customer of theirs, you should be putting an awful lot of pressure on them right now, because for everything I'm hearing, I feel like we're still very much at risk, and I've been assured that we're not at risk. But my confidence is rapidly diminishing based on what I'm hearing, and it's not because I'm trying to get noxious, it's because my unease is growing, because everything I've been told until now is basically being contradicted by what I'm hearing right now. And I'm closest to this process, so if I feel uncomfortable, I can only imagine how that could make other people feel, that relying on me who's relying on you. You got something better to tell Kenny?
I have, I have the rest presentation, if you'd like me to do it, because I think it clarifies what your concern is on.
I hope so.
Okay. Any more questions about kind of what happens, how we, you know, what puts along the other back in service? So, yeah, my name is Jim Riggler, I work with Matt, by title, I'm the Engineering Resource Manager, so we have four central division. So I'm involved with, you know, the engineering folks, the planning folks, and, you know, the folks along those lines. So, um, what am I doing, Matt? Hold on. Okay. This is a busy slide. This is similar to what Matt just showed you. It's very busy. It just shows where the pattern of transformers are located. Okay. Just let me touch on past history, and believe me, I'm not going to dwell on this, but I just want, just want to give you a feel, aside from what I just heard tonight. In the last five years, six circuits on there had about eight momentary outages, which is similar to kind of what you're saying, which would be an outage of less than five minutes, normally less than a minute, actually. Okay? So in the last five years prior to this, we had less than, you know, one per circuit for a what we call momentary outage, which is very good outage. And we've had 31 extended outages, which is about on average, one per circuit per year. This does not include superstorm Sandy. I know your station was down, I think for approximately two days. I know we had a lot of problems with trees trying to clear up, and we had a lot of outside plant damage, so it does discount that. But if you discount that, this is normally outage history up until 2014. So I just wanted to give you a feel for it. According to records that I found, there were no large lease outages, there may have been a single customer with servers or something, but through Hurricane Irene or October snowstorm. Hopefully, my records were right. And then also, again, except for Sandy, in those last five years, on the 1111, there wasn't a station shut. Okay? So my point is, because it's older, doesn't mean it's unreliable, okay? Some of the, some of the short outages you may see now are because you're connected to the 13 KB system, which is actually set up in sections to sectionalize trouble, and you may see an outage for 10 seconds, 30 seconds, 50 seconds, okay? That may be what you saw today, and I think that's what it was, actually. So, again, just because it's old, just because it's 4 KB, it's actually in general a very reliable system. So let me talk to you about the short-term plan, and I think this is where I want to jive up with you, Mr. Mayor. What we're doing is we're leaving the station de-energized, okay, while we complete the repairs and replacement for our workers' safety. We don't want to have folks working in next to one cubicle that something happens, you know, now it's supposed to get warmer again, and we may get more moisture, but if something happens for our guys working right next to it. So leave me a conscious decision that we're going to leave it de-energized. Now, if something very bad happened outside plant with the wire, we can get the people out of there, hook the station back, hook the equipment back up that is, that is, that is good, and get the folks back in service out there. We want to be able, to be able to do that, because we have to get our workers out of safety. Excuse me, I'm way too cold, I'm a little... So what we're going to do is we're going to continue to serve the customers from the other station, the other circuits, from the 13,000 KB system, which is fed through those patterned transformers, and there's six of them out there. What we're doing to make sure there isn't any problems out there, we're patrolling these circuits weekly. And we have a system where we use an infrared technology, where they look at it every week, and they have this infrared camera, this heat sensing camera, and go down there and they see if there's any potential problems before it actually happens, okay? So we use that, if we find something that has to be repaired, then we'll do some switching around, and then make those repaired before it actually happens, then somebody's out of service. So that's what we're doing right now, what's happening. So, long-term plan, there's long-term, and then there's real long-term. Long-term plan is we're going to continue updating the station with the new transformer, the associated breaker that's there. Okay? Mr. Mayor, I'm asking the same questions as to why it takes so long to get a new cubicle. The station is 60 years old, it has to be custom-made. You know, we go after these folks, you know, we want to get it as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, it's taking, at this point, well, it was about four to six weeks before we started this process, at least, at least, you know.
How senior is the level of this ability to get this?
I'm sorry?
How senior is the level of this ability? Is it pushing on them? Is Ralph Rosso pushing on them? Are you just pushing on these guys to try and ask about this?
Well, I can't, before you answer that?
Nobody here has suggested that anybody down in the part of the park that gets it fixed, that's the last thing they would suggest this is like, anyone interrupting this at this point?
My answer is, I don't know if Ralph Rosso's pushing it.
Well, I mean, for example...
Okay. You know, the people I deal with are the experts in our asset management, and those are folks that are pushing to get the new equipment in here as quick as possible.
Maybe it's time to escalate that, because...
They did, and I can answer.
Well, I've been asking for the better part of my life, and I can answer some, and I see you're going to answer some.
I'll get your answer, and I'll talk to Frank, and we'll get back to you. In addition to the transformer and breaker that's being replaced, we're also replacing all the cubicle wiring. So part of all that, all that equipment where the breakers are, or where it comes out after its 4 KB, all that wiring within this cubicle, we're replacing all that. So that'll all be upgraded. On the outside plant, when I call outside plant, the overhead wires, we're also replacing the overhead wires that now come out of the station, okay? We've had problems with that, so we figured, okay, while the station's down, let's replace all that wiring that comes out of the station. If we needed to head in the circuit, that has a problem, and everybody downstream is out. We're also relocating overhead switches that are actually in some backyards, you know, close to, close to our station, down the way, like in the backyards. We're relocating them for easier access for us, in case we do have to lose those switches. So we're also doing that. Somebody mentioned about maintenance schedules. Okay, we do follow maintenance schedules for the inside plant, which is the station, and outside plant, which is the poles and mark. And we do, we do follow those maintenance schedules. Part of the outside plant maintenance, I mentioned infrared before, we do that on a regular basis anyway. In this case, we go on once a week. And then also tree, also tree trimming is done on a four-year cycle. I think we'll be working on the Edison circuits this year, and may have actually done, started actually at the end of last year. Trees are a major part of our outside plant issues, so we'll be doing tree trimming. This is, again, this is, there's a strategy being developed for all these stations. We have over 100 of these 4 KB stations. So it's, they have to look at these details, and they're all at different levels, from class A, class B, class C, different levels of C. So they have to look at all these and say, okay, what is our strategy to start replacing these stations, upgrading these stations? That's what we have the outside folks coming in and looking at. The information I just got this morning was that they hope to have a report that they're going to review by the end of March. And then they'll decide how they're going to, what they're going to do, how they're going to fund it, and then start, start to work. Now, how long is it, how long is it going to be like this? Again, right now, right now, we have ways to, in a pinch, from on the outside, we can get the folks out of this station, and there is equipment that we can, we can get folks back in service, okay? The entire station being repaired, with getting the cubicle that has to be special ordered, we're looking at, we're still looking at about four to six weeks, okay? Hedging a little bit on that, because we didn't anticipate all the bad weather we've had, and every time we have bad weather like that, it just sets us back a little bit more. So, but we're still looking at four to six weeks. We're hoping to have everything back in, back on the station, hopefully, beginning of, beginning of April. That's our plan this year. Yes?
How many hours a day does work happen at the station?
It's working, it's working, they're working two shifts. I don't think they're working 24, they're working?
No, not right now.
Okay. Some of the things that are done, they may be working 24, like they may be processing oil at some point with a new transformer, and at that point, it'll be 24 hours. Right now, we're working double shifts. And we have people reporting directly there, so they're not coming to our headquarters in 16-hour early, getting their stuff and going, but they work directly there, and they're working double shifts.
So is that 16-hour work base?
16-hour work base, correct. Mr. Mayor, did I, did I clear up any of the, any of the confusion as far as the timing?
Well, considering the fact that it's been four to six weeks since we started, it's still four to six weeks, now that's three months. So it wasn't four to six weeks from then, and so, yes, you did, but I just can't say that with tremendous amount of confidence, not because you're saying anything at all, but, you know, that answer hasn't changed, and yet, past the six weeks when I was originally told that everything would be, and running back to work, and you have no time to, whether the equipment's going to come back here and be used to be replaced, nobody can explain how, you know, whether or not that's being worked on 24 hours a day, which it seems to be a void. Nobody can tell me where that falls in the priority of things, nobody, nobody knows who's responsible for that. So forgive me if I lack a lot of confidence in what you're saying.
Fair enough. Listen, for what happened here, obviously, we're disappointed, you guys are upset, because we, we expect, even not at any power outage, which is obviously, you know, that's what we want. We want to get this back to normal as quickly as possible. So I would like to think, without having somebody tell me, they've done all they could to get this piece of equipment in here as quickly as possible. I know they've already been moving the old transformer, I saw them offload in the world not that long ago. So they are moving feverishly. Now, just because we don't have that cubicle, doesn't mean we're not doing work. We're all, we're replacing all the wires in the cubicles, we're going to work on the transformer. The last thing is that, is that, is that break, the question.
With the six individual patterned transformers, I imagine they're, you know, because they lack redundancy right at that point, they're a little less reliable, but let's say one out of the six fails, would the five others supply it, or would you then energize the station?
They can't. There's enough capacity out there with six of them. If one of them were to go down, we shouldn't be able to supply from one of the other patterned transformers out there. Because there are switches between those circuits.
So there is, you know, being in the, you know, the construction maintenance business and having to deal with old equipment, I realize that things do take a very long time to get. But my question is, is there any difference in the, in your opinion, that the reliability of the service that you will provide going forward, you know, if the station was back to normal versus this present system that we have now set up? I mean, are we at greater risk with these, and the aesthetics of these?
Yeah, I mean, well, well, one thing I can say is, is your exposure, okay, for these circuits is a lot greater, because now, instead of hunger for medicine to the end of wherever the end of Hound Park is, you're coming from, you're on a circuit now, it's further away, and it has a lot more exposure. So you could, you could subject yourself to those, again, what we call momentary outages, less than, less than a five-minute outage. But those circuits also have you going to see, and they tie to each other. And if one of them went down, that would be able to pick up the other one, including the 4 KB circuits that are either hot or... Was there a question over there? Yes?
I'd like to know how we're going to be compensated for throwing out food from the freezer, which I had to do. Each time I put food in there, the power would go out, and the food is not safe to eat, and throw it out, and go shopping again, and throw it out. And that's, that's one of the problems I had, and that's very expensive when you see the system. And the other problem I had is it got so terribly cold that it was dangerous, and then we had to call the police. Called the police, and they said they're going to try to set up a warming station, which took time. There was no transportation for us to the warming station, had to pay a taxi, and pray to the taxi to come in time, climb down snow stairs to go down through the taxi, paid the taxi $10 to get to the Hound Park before the church. There, there we were until 11:30 at night, and the police came and said, now we're going to try to take you home, now you would have, now you have electricity, and help us to go in. I feel we should be compensated, we have, we are being punished for the service.
Okay.
I mean, that is, yeah, I mean, that is part of, and again, we'll work with the mayor on that, but that is part of our claims process. I, maybe, Mayor, we can, you know, figure out a way for some of the seniors to help a little bit on the application of, you know, perhaps the, the forms of being, being readily available. The way I set it up with the mayor on the email that I sent him this morning was the ability to go right online, fill out your, fill out your claim form, and it gets submitted right to the claims department, and then there's that interaction there. If that's not convenient for you, and you prefer to do more of a application where you have to fill out, then we can, we can absolutely supply that.
I think what we'll do is, more of a conversation with the captain, coordinator, illustrator, and figure out a way for the senior center, or the full resources, to help the seniors help.
There's one other problem. On the claim form, it says you will not be reimbursed for any refrigerated items.
Well, I can't speak to what's on the claim form.
Then, we'll be talking about it.
Yeah, but again, I would, I would, I would still fill it out completely and send that in. I let them deal with it directly, and then express that concern. They're aware, they're aware, we've had them involved in our conversations, and they're very well aware.
I think, I think you can, because we can do that. I have a question. I have a question. Excuse me, I'm... Yes?
If the mayor touched on this in his comments, but when residents call, and they say, it's worn, this, that they don't have service, and remark as well, we show that we do have service, what is your, what, what infrastructure, what do you have, what kind of technology does, do you seem to have that can identify when somebody calls, you know, when they're calling to confirm that, or not? Or if the calls are not even being made, what are you looking at that you detect these things? Because it, and, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's working too well.
I think you take that, yeah.
Yeah, I think Bill Nash with Compass Solutions is going to talk to this.
Oh, is this a good segue?
Well, it actually was a pretty good segue. But can you keep the question?
Was there another question? Was there another question for you back there?
Yes, my question is, with the transformers that are in temporary in place, and soon to go away?
Yes.
Today, we had one of those brownouts, and we've noticed them quite a bit, even when the transformers, this one was put on high block, but even with it being there, we're still experiencing these brownouts. What is going to be put in place so we don't have to experience this all the time? Is the transformer that is there supposed to avoid those problems?
If I can clarify, have the brownouts, so we understand, have the brownouts been, for these temporary, momentary power outages during the time that we installed, this hasn't been an ongoing thing, this is just since the, since the...
It's been on, like summer? Yes, it has been, and it's a real concern, because if you guys are checking and know that there's a problem going on in Hound Park, and you're not aware of it, that next week they'll be the problem.
I just, I just want to understand, when we say brownouts, can you describe what you're calling brownouts?
Blackout.
Okay, so it's a short-term blackout, okay? Because a brownout does...
Because a, a brownout to us means something else. That's why, that's why I wanted to clarify that, okay?
Right? It's not a blackout.
Well, no, actually, it does mean something different, but, uh...
We have no problem.
I think I finally got this on you.
It's out.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We're clarifying, it's not a brownout.
Yeah, okay. It's a momentary blackout, I was, I was talking about a momentary outage, okay.
Sounds like switching is going on where, you know, they're, they're, they're experiencing an outage. Seven seconds later, it tries to go on again. Forty-five seconds later, it comes back to another circuit. Maybe that's what you're seeing. It would just be like a brownout. That's probably what's going on.
Are there to your map, excuse me, is there your map? Um, there are people that are, that have not been, um, affected by those, the Edison substation, but are on the other grid that are also experiencing these blackouts.
Correct. So those, so those, those folks, and, and now that you're on these pad-mounted transformers, are attached to these 13KV circuits, and that is actually normally how they operate. They, there, there's, there's pole-mounted breakers that will trip for a problem like a tree limb on, on the wire and then reclose after 10 seconds. If the problem is still there, it'll try to isolate the problem and your power may come on in 50 seconds. Okay? And then at that point, if the problem's still there, then it's locked out until we sense somebody, air cleared of trouble, and then everybody back in service. That's normally how the 13, that's normally what you see on, on the 13KV servers.
So can you clarify?
Yes.
So, does this imply, because I keep hearing the word exposure, I never hear exposure possible. So does that mean that even though we've been led to believe, if we go today, things are basically stable? On some level, things really are potentially not as stable?
That's incorrect. Because, because the, 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 the small blackouts that you're seeing is exactly how the 13KV system operates. It has nothing to do with the fact that there's a pad-mounted transformer on there that's picking up additional load on the 4KV system.
So does that mean that whenever you go back on the substation, these blackout services are there?
No. Because once you're on the 4KV, it's not as susceptible to things that, that the 13KV system is. So once you're back on the 4KV, it's normally a little more forgiving in terms of, uh, a tree limb smacking against the wire. It normally will not trip. Now, what, what, what would happen if it is bad enough, a problem on the wire, then the station breaker will trip and it will reclose in 10 seconds. So you, you could have that. What I'm saying, you would not have as much as you would on, on the 13KV service system.
Okay, but as far as your concerns, because the original problem that we were told when we had these two circuits failing continuously was that the, basically overloaded. And if I had just did the first part of the presentation, which you're now saying is that with the six transformers, pad-mounted transformers, and the upgrades to the wire, that effectively has stabilized this on a temporary basis?
Correct.
So those initial risks now, because of the wiring and everything else, people don't have to worry about when these experiments go, potentially this whole system fell away, maybe it was the worst part of the project.
We have, we have more than enough capacity out there to handle load that's being picked up from this substation.
Okay, can I just ask, what, what's the change then? Really, because originally you were telling me it was gonna be an additional transformers, but it wasn't. So is it the wiring changes?
Well, we, we, we installed two transformers to start. Two, right?
Was it two or was it three?
It was three. It was three. Um, then, then we started having problems on the outside plant. So we went to three more transformers. And then at that point, we were having problems with the wire itself, which was when Matt touched on, we replaced 2,500 feet of wire. That was coming off one of the transformers. And that was primarily on those two circuits. The four were staying, the four were staying in service the whole time that we put it back on a pad-mounted transformer. We were having, that was that time after we connected, that that wire was starting to fuse. So that's where the 2,500 feet of wire, we had to go through the process of changing out the wire to be able to hold. Correct?
Yeah. Okay, you guys want to keep going?
Yeah, sure. Any more questions? I got, I think we're gonna segue, and we had the customer, a couple of customer, uh, service questions, so.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Bill Nash, I'm the director of customer contact with, uh, with PSEG. We have two call centers based in New Jersey. One is in Cranford, New Jersey, and we have another in Wardentown. And we have approximately 300 service professionals working at those locations. We also have a third party for operational redundancy purposes out of the Manhattan, Georgia, about 50 representatives. So we have about 350 folks that handle customer contact every day. And, Mr. Mayor, you made a comment earlier that, uh, was really a concern for me. You said that you were aware of instances where residents were hung up on by our employees. And I see heads nodding, some of those people are discouraged themselves. And I'm here to tell you that we take that extremely seriously in our business. And I'm leaving my card here this evening. If you have any instance, a particular customer name, all of our phone calls are recorded. And I commit to you that if you provide me, uh, specifics around an occasion where that occurred, I will research it fully and get back to you.
I appreciate that. Without, I'm kind of flattered, as you have in this system, I would feel the element of this need was how, I'm, I'm kind of surprised at this point that you didn't take it away, move the team through you, customer service calls and contacts, meeting people at Highland Park and...
And we have.
And what can you tell us about that?
I have no evidence of anyone being disconnected.
Okay, so dozens and dozens of people have told me that. I don't believe, since I know anyone personally, I don't believe they made that up.
And as I said, if you can provide me the details, I will pull those calls and list it specifically to those calls.
That would be a great question.
A customer wrote to your center representative after he was hung up on an actual foul mount pad. When he called to ask when we would anticipate service, but they kept saying, I don't even remember what they said, but he actually wrote to your main office about it.
Ma'am, what is your name?
Stein, S-T-E-I-N, and it's a person who made a, uh, personal complaint.
Burton Stein?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Can I give you the address?
Yes, please.
246 Hilton Street, Highland Park.
Thank you. Would it be okay if I called you?
Yes.
Okay, I will be back in touch. Yes, ma'am.
Well, when we called, first it was that a pole went down, then you had a car hit a pole, then it was a tree. And then each time, each time was another story that why we don't have power. Every time was another story, stories and stories we could get. And so we did speak to a supervisor and he didn't give us anything to it.
Well, ma'am, I apologize, doesn't sound like that experience met your expectations. I can tell you that our representatives, when they're on the phone with our customers, the best information that they have available to them is through an outage management system that we utilize. And unfortunately, we don't have a camera eye view into the field to see what's happening on a particular screen and what causes that. We have to rely on our peers in electric delivery to respond, work, and provide information when available if estimated restoration times are going to change. They do change. It's a common practice in, in the industry, and we do our best to communicate those changes to our customers.
And if I could, if I could real quick, and I didn't mean to cut you off, I just wanna make sure, um, everybody's aware as well. We also have been working internally, because some of the, some of the issue that we saw is I'm getting information directly from the division. I'm, as I mentioned when I opened up my comments, I'm the liaison to the mayor. So I'm getting information directly from the division as to problems, what we see happening, estimated restoration times, and sometimes it takes a little bit of time to get all those pieces of information together. So there, there are times where I'm giving the mayor, you know, one bit of information, and then I have to call him back 10 minutes later and update him. So it's a constant process. Where we saw, where we saw a disconnect, and we've been working on that, uh, in, internally, is estimated restoration times. I'm giving the mayor the best information and I'm getting from the field guys. Bill's group is working off an outage management system, which historically is a little bit more conservative than what the guys in the field are telling us that, that the work is gonna be done. So internally, from a communication standpoint, uh, from this, we set up more of a, um, we set up a better communication chain internally. So all four units, because don't forget, I mean, Karen's here for corporate communications, she's dealing with the media, Bill's dealing with the customer, I'm dealing with the elected officials, and the crew sometimes are dealing with the police. So there's four different aspects of people looking for, or groups looking for information. And it's, at times, it gets very difficult to manage. So what we're trying to do now internally is more of a task force, if you will, that allows that communication to flow between the four groups. So that message is delivered a little bit more consistently. All right, so we apologize, there was that, the first go-round where we knew that was gonna be, it was about a 12-hour period where we knew it was gonna be out. As, as Bill mentioned, it did get extended. But we also had crews talking to the police and we had customer service centers talking to the customers. So there was that, there was that disconnect there. So, and we, and we worked on that immediately, which Bill put in place, I don't know if you wanna mention it, I'm sure you will, um, what we did.
Our street should be checked into because in the back of my house, they had electric. On the side of my house, they had electric. But Hilton Street does not have electric. There was something wrong on our street, and we're always out. It's a windy, it's constantly, we're out, and we can't go on because there's gotta be something wrong on our street.
Yeah, and the fortune or fortune, and the guys can dovetail on me as well, is that on each cert, the, the circuit maps are very, very complicated. You can have a neighbor across the street that's on a completely different circuit. So you're at, you're out and your neighbor's on. So it all depends on how your, how your property lies within that circuit map. And unfortunately, that happens, that happens, that happens a lot.
Doesn't make any sense.
Well, you know, there's, don't forget, we have one point, we got one point, uh, I mean, 2.2 million electric customers out there. They're on our service territory. It's a very, very complicated system.
Further down in Highland Park, they all had electric.
Yeah.
And we had, we had none.
Yeah, and it was that too.
It, 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 it was cold, and we really had...
No, we realized that, we apologize for that. And then, listen, there's nothing more important for us than to have that power back on. We're not out there to say, "All, all power's off." We're, we're, we're just gonna, we would, trust us. We want the power back on for you, and we understand that. And it was a series of, uh, it was a series of events that happened, I think, that Matt and Jim outlined, that really, really made, you know, restoring that system, it makes it very complicated. You know, I always say a lot of times, and I'm, I'm not shortchanging, you know, we take for granted the ability that when we flip a switch, the light goes on, but if you, and we try, and, and as I mentioned in my comments, we wanted this to be educational. It takes a lot for that electric, for you to be able to flip that switch and put it on. It's a very, very complicated system.
You know, I don't think, I don't think anybody hates that, and I'm not sure there are any questions to that. I think the frustration here is the, I don't even have, the inconsistency certainly is a word. I was gonna say, the, the extraordinary internal lack of communication, lack of process, lack of system, a slight lack of coordination. I mean, just, you know, to the points that are being raised here. You know, when a good friend of mine tells me that when he, when the power went out repeatedly, he got a recording from the customer service, because he works in Hudson County. He called from a different area, his own region, the phone got picked up immediately and somebody gave all the information he needed. And they told him, "Yeah, the policy is that when people in these overloaded areas, because the call center gets overloaded, everybody calls the same powers out, automatically goes to recording or whatever else." And, you know, I don't know what kind of contingency planning, you know, I realize this was, you know, I wouldn't even say extraordinary. You know, but just overall, the way this, I didn't wanna say it was handled, the way this is being mishandled, I think you should do a real case study on this. And I really think that what transpired here, I, you know, I don't know how you can find this out. I don't know how it's okay when you know that the temperature is zero, when you know that there have been consistent power outages. I don't know why you're not setting up a SWAT team or more, unless it's saying, you know, "Well, we're gonna set up a phone tag, right here around the park." You wanna make sure that we have a standard response type for what's going on around here. We wanna make sure that you guys know that if they're, this wasn't saying, you didn't have 200 pounds that were out of power. You had a couple. You know, maybe you had something in New County, I don't know. What I know is, by averages in two weeks, you know, in that type of weather, can't possibly be a setup. And as I said, the fact, the fact that none of you thought that it was important enough to come down here and show real empathy to these people that were in the dark, that were in the cold, you know, that were frightened beyond belief for very good reason, you know, and then basically say, you know, "We're sorry." I mean, you know, we appreciate the fact that you're sorry. But, you know, I raised this issue at multiple levels at PSEG, and I'm really glad that you're here. But I really don't know that, you know, the systems are being put in place to make, maybe electricity work better. But that's plan A. Plan B is, what's gonna happen if things don't go right again? And, you know, we're gonna be back to this far ass, so we're gonna have this degree of uncertainty. Six weeks from now, we're gonna be looking at, "Oh, it's another four to six weeks." And that goes on for six months. I mean, the confidence level that I have right now is nominal at best because the parts still aren't working together. And you still don't really have the answer, some of the substantive answers that I was hoping you would have. Now, granted, I've given you a lot of time to talk, but I just wanna give you a sense that, you know, as frustrated as people are when the power doesn't go on, it's what happens when customer service days exacerbates things beyond description. So you said you did listen to some of these things, you have heard some of these audio books. So what can you tell us about what you learned about our experience?
I have not found any incident of a customer being hung up on, Mr. Mayor. But I'm not saying, I have not found any incident of a customer being hung up on, but I'm not saying that that did not happen. We are three, can I just finish my comment for you? We're a 350-person organization, and it's with any organization of that size, there's varying patience and performance. I can tell you this, that if you give me specific facts, like these individuals are kind enough to provide, I will follow up in a timely fashion and investigate any, uh, instance fully. With regard to your earlier comment about the recording, we had an automated platform. Because of the scale of outages, it would not be possible for us to staff our call center to pick up the phone when an outage of significant scale occurs. But we need to make sure that we service customers when we're confronted with that scenario. So when outage of significant scale occurs, to result, routed into an automated platform, they can generate an order for restoration. If at any time, when they're in that platform, they have an emergency, a gas leak, a wire down at their home, or they feel they absolutely have to speak to an agent, they can pound out and get to, in queue for a live agent. So there was never a scenario in this event where a customer was locked in into an automated solution and had no option to get to a live agent.
Except for a wait time of five to six minutes. Which is, you know, listen, I mean, the fact is, try to picture this. Do you think that people might get a little bit panicked or anxious under a surface outage? Maybe, maybe you need to put people on, you know, training, wrap contingency plans when the weather turns like that and you know you have this type of situation, that, you know, the response level goes up, not down. That can't be your standard operating procedure under these extraordinary and incredibly difficult conditions. I could, I can, at least I'll pay for this. I mean, you know, I train customer service people. I don't wanna be thankful for my colleagues. I want you to do something about the problems that Highland Park experienced. And I don't feel any closer to any of that happening as a result of the dialogue that we're having. I just don't. I don't know if anybody else does, but that's my feeling.
I, I feel some of the problem, or the root cause of the problem is that you are kind of in a reactive mode from your customers, nor relying on them to make complaints in a sense that they don't have anything and for them to get from you the information that they require. But in this incident, you had, you knew that this station was problematic. You knew the area that it affected. And so I think moving forward in your long-term solutions and customer services to identify in kind of a more proactive way of communicating, you know, obviously, things change, but, you know, find out, and it's difficult to communicate, but instead of having an individual having to, let's say, wade through your customer service, which, as Gary said, might be okay in the normal day-to-day thing, when these incidents occurs in a localized area, to have a more, uh, you know, proactive thing, getting, you taking on the responsibility of, you know, uh, relaying the information to the customer, just saying, you know, in the, as, as part of your long-term solutions, that's, that's something to be considered.
In fact, I wanna go a step further on my page we just sent, because the chief is sitting there very patiently, very quietly. You know, what your customer service function becomes when this happens, are police supply. And my dispatchers are not trained to deal with this, nor should they be put in a position that we could disclose. There's a ton of other potential emergencies that can be happening in snowstorms, you know? And thankfully, whether we had them or not, that's not their responsibility. And thankfully, whether we had them or not, that's not their responsibility. You know, are we prepared to deal with emergencies as best we possibly can? You know, you guys have a lot more resources than we do, and you're not set up to do this, right? I don't know how you expect us to handle these things, especially when they're unexpected. So, you know, I don't think, you know, your intention is to outsource customer service to us, or communications to us. This guy sitting in front of you, Matt Hirsch, is a volunteer. This guy basically was on notice 24/7 with my administrator and my police captain and a couple of council members, you know? And you, we're running this on chewing-gum and rubber bands because you guys rock the ball. You know, and I just, forgive me, it's just, to say you hear it, to say you're working on a task force, I mean, what I hope is there's some very tangible things that are going to happen with this, with some sort of tentative timetable that says, "These are the things specifically that we're doing. These are the things we're working on. These are the things we can specifically help you with. What else do you need help with, etc.?" Because the way this system is, is really broken. It's really broken. The electric system isn't broken, everything that supports it is badly broken, badly inefficient. It really is. And I'm the first one to give people that, but I can't give you guys any more than now, I'm sorry. And that's just how I feel. And, you know, as I said, I felt like giving the eye of the store, you know, closest to the information, maybe I'm in a position, I've got a month to reflect on all this. And I'm, I personally, for whatever it's worth, I'm not a hack, again. You know, I, I was thinking that this would help things. I don't, I personally don't feel helped by this. Unless you have some tangible plans that you plan to expect to implement, that help manage what comes next in terms of keeping us abreast of getting everything back online to safety, in terms of how people can feel confident when they call customer service that there's really some trained individual that's prepared to respond, that you have some response time standards, for whether it's for, and this issue with, without getting into the whole gas leak thing, you know, the fact is, if the police chief gets a phone number from a field supervisor, he says, "Give me a call," you know, I don't expect to wait 48 hours for a return phone call from that field supervisor. I don't care that it's Washington's birthday. You know, I, you know, I expect Frank to be able to go on vacation and be able to sleep at night, but what if I get a phone call at 3:00 in the morning? I have to wait till 6:00, 7:00 is awake. If you guys really are 24/7 operation, you need to be set up to support us and this community and all your communities 24/7, you know, we're there. And if, if that's true in Highland Park, God help the bigger communities, the bigger customers, please, they're just, they're bruised. I'm sorry to say that, but that's how I feel. So, wait, so you, so what's your plan? Do you have a plan?
I can speak, I can speak for our contact center operations. We are 24/7 operation, where it's staffed to man 24 hours a day. We, when a, when a situation occurs that has significant scale, we utilize a combination of an automated platform and agents on the phone to take the calls. And I can tell you that we have metrics around our service level, around our call abandonment. We have a transactional survey that's performed quarterly. We have a perception survey that's performed quarterly. We track our EPU and executive complaints very carefully. We've got a number of industry best practices in place to make sure that we're managing our contact center operations as, as best we can. And I understand that this was a unique situation with a catastrophic failure, and it challenged our organization, and challenged your residents. And so.
And what are you guys doing about that? That's really the only question. I mean, you know, the expression is, "You don't build the church for Easter." It seems to me like you need to have some contingency plan for this day. The question is, what?
Are you from, Mayor, you referring to more of the customer service end, or from what they're, from what they're?
Yeah, customer service end.
Because I, you know, because from, from the electric division, I thought, you know, we covered quite short and long.
Well, I, I heard that.
Okay. Now, from the customer service end, I think what, I mean, from what Bill, Bill, I don't mean to jump in for you, or at you. But from the customer service end, the concern, like, the company has a, a platform in place. That, that platform has worked, I now, listen, we had, we had an issue, we had obviously a catastrophic issue, but this platform that Bill has in place has been working for us, you know, since, since it got implemented. I, I get that. So I want to get to the root of your concern, which I got down as more of investigating why, which I think Bill is trying to say he's going to do, why some of the customer service functions were not performed correctly. Via customers being hung up on, rude customers, rude customer service reps to the customers, inadequate information. And I think from what Bill is saying.
Inconsistent information, like.
Inconsistent, now, we talk, inconsistent, I kind of put on a side because that's a, that's a difficult one. I'm getting to the root of the problem for Bill, for customer service issues. So I think what Bill is saying is, for us to be able to, you know, implement a fix for a, for a customer service kind of job function, he's saying that he wants to try and get some specifics because each call is recorded. So we can go back, we have the ability to go back and review all of that. Now, may not be, right now, the ability to get that information, I know we got some, but I think if we work together and figure out, well, because you said you had a bunch of friends that got hung up, that's a great place to start. Let's get those bunch of friends, it's, it's probably very easy timeframe to figure out because it happened January 11th, and we knew when the outages were happening, so we can kind of get a roundabout way of where they're at. And I think, allow Bill to go back and investigate what inadequate services that our customer service, perceived customer service were given. Let him, give him the opportunity to go back and do that. There, there is really no change, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. The way we operate to the customers really is not going to change, but what we know, we do have to discuss, which is what I mentioned before, is making sure internally, more of estimated restoration times and information is kind of almost in sync, which usually it is, but I will say that when, when the customer service center's working on outage map, it does get a little bit more conservative than me giving you real-time information. I'm giving you real-time information. The system is determining based on the level of outage of when that outage is going to be. And that's something we are discussing and working on internally. So that I can assure you.
So let me just tell you what this is, just before you.
And I just want to make sure I'm just capturing, so.
You're just, I think there's a fundamental disability here that I need to articulate. And that is, that when you say customer service either works, it pretty much continues to work the way it works. Customer service, from my perspective, did not work during what you call this category. It's, it's mutually exclusive, and it almost incomprehensible to say that a catastrophic situation, so customer service function won't. You talk about abnormal conditions, then you need to have some mechanism in place that ratchets up the level of attention that a burrowing distress gets under this set of circumstances.
Now, to.
And you didn't do that, and you don't give me any sense that you prepared to.
Well, not necessarily. So let's, I, I wanted to tell you what was put in place. I mean, that's probably a time, you know, from when we did the burly calls and, and went out to do the, the 800 number specific for Highland Park. When that was, when that issue was going on, we didn't, I think, customer service, I don't know if you want to touch on it, so.
No, we did, we generated an outbound campaign to your residents and provided a dedicated number for them to call if they wanted to talk in greater detail about the outage and what they were experiencing. We had 25 calls to that number. We contacted over 2,100 customers that we outbound campaigned, and then we returned, you know, those calls that we received.
And do you think that it's possible that the number of people that go over have all service power on the electric?
No, it's, it's now, you can send it some back.
I mean, people don't have electricity that powers their telephone. How are people supposed to?
Mr. Mayor, I'm curious, what do you see that we could have done differently from your vantage point?
Well, I mean, give me a great example. I said, the first thing you shouldn't have done is you should have gotten your car, you should have come down to Highland Park and reviewed the current conditions. And you would have sat in some of these phone calls and seen what some of these people were experiencing, and you would have heard their frustrations, you would have listened to them alongside. A, I think that would have been a good place to start. Okay? Because you have no empathy because you weren't here, so you don't understand. So that's the first big problem. The second problem is that, as I said before, it seems to me that your contingency operations ought to have something set up that says, "You know what? We only have a couple of towns right now that are distressed. So what do we have? Do we have, you use the term SWAT team or task force, we have a task force that responds not just the way the line crews responded, of course, you said, an army of people that work on the lines and the patrol and stores, that was terrific. Okay? You got 350 call centers. At some point, did somebody say to me, "You know what? We're dedicating 20 call center reps, especially trained, to deal with what's going to happen in Highland Park, what's been happening, and what's going to happen over the next few weeks until we think things are going to be returned to you." Do I think that you or your boss, that guy Furline, he called me once on a Sunday night because I called the EPU? Should have called up before now when we first meet face-to-face and said, "What have we not done that we should be doing a little at this price?" As opposed to waiting until all things go? I didn't hear anything from you guys, and now you ask me what I think you should have done? I mean, that's insulting. That's insulting to the residents of Highland Park. The time to ask that question was a month and a half ago. You should have been down here on, not day one, but on day two, or certainly by the third outage. Because anybody can understand how there's a poor aftershock after the earthquake. Nine? You know, I realize it takes time to set up a meeting, I'm ready for the chicanes. But basically to say, you know, "Well, now we're here, and now you want..." You don't try putting the onus on me. That, that's not how this works.
No, it wasn't my intention.
So I'm sure the professional, listen, if I had to think this thing for, for you, that's already a fundamental.
I would just, I would just say it's a bit simpler for your thinking.
Okay, well, guess what? You're getting, and I'm not done giving it to you, but I'm not going to give it to you all right now in the interest of time. But I think the fact that if you don't come with a plan to say, "You know what? You talked about best practices. You want to know what best practices are? I'll go to some of the industry experts and I'll snill you with them." You'd be embarrassed at how many you don't have. Because it just seems to me that there's a ton of things that you could have done if you were a little bit creative, if you weren't so bureaucratic, if you weren't trained basically to say, "This is the procedure that we follow under all circumstances." Basically, you were treated like a piece of needle pusher shot. And I don't think that's the way this ought to happen. I just don't. So maybe do you want to digest that a little bit, reflect on it, and maybe we can have a conversation in substance about how things ought to work on the power. Turn on. Turn on. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was one of the lucky ones, like Bill said. I had mostly power. And she's right, once I, Crow's Road had it, and, or actually, the block, because I walk my dog at night and we just see me with power. I was very lucky. I, half my purpose complex lost it, and I seem to have it or only three hours about it. But my, I did call, and I always got a person. I only called about three times, but they didn't know.
Right.
She said, "I, I don't know." She said, "I think it's bad, but I don't know." So in, in other words, I ended up like, "Are you okay?" But they need to know what's going on better, so they can better calm us down. I mean, yeah, that's what Gary said. I'm just saying, from my point of view, that I don't panic over stuff like that. I, but, and I was lucky because I mostly had power, and I'm not that old, and I cuddled my animals. But they was, whenever I called customer service, they were clueless. I knew more than they did because I've been walking around at night with my dog. So they, they need to have somehow at their fingertips more knowledge. I mean, you know.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. And this John would have mentioned a point here. Right now, we're really relying on our customers calling and reporting to us that an outage has occurred. And when we receive those calls, that's more typically becoming aware of it for the first time. And so the information in our representative's hands are, is the information that drives our outage maps on the web, and it's the information that's available as our crews begin to get out, assess the situation, and update the information. It would be fantastic if, if our representatives had real-time information, but we just do not currently have that capability. But we're doing our best to try to improve the information.
You don't have like a, a big computer with everything like, like NCIS.
I would know. If you, if you lost your power tonight when you got home, I wouldn't know if you lost your power unless you just swarmed.
And I couldn't call you because I didn't remember to charge my cell phone because I do have a electric phone.
I guess it's.
Well, this is, excuse me, but this is the problem with your standing. Was, we were told, we were told, "Don't tell your, tell your residents not to call in because we know where the outages are."
Oh, who told, who told you that?
That's the information that I thought we had. Excuse me if I add a line here, but.
That's not correct. You shouldn't do that.
Well, it was our residents.
You shouldn't do that.
Well, it was our residents.
What we were telling was not to call the, the Office of Emergency Management, which what everybody was doing. We were telling them to call the 800 number.
Yeah, they weren't supposed to call and say that, yes, they could.
Yeah, that's what they, that's what was going on. They were calling Emergency Management and, and saying, "Oh, I got a gas leak to get somebody out there."
Okay, well, whatever got modeled there, but it was our residents that, that were persistent anyway, that then told us that they, that it was a numbers game. Would you think you should say?
Well, it is, when you say a numbers game, I mean, when we do restoration, there is a protocol from hospitals, hospitals all the way down to the last person who just has that blood drop on.
Did you not know how many people were out on us?
I'm sorry?
Did you not know how many?
No, we did. Once, once, once it groups in and we know the circuit's down, then we, then we can, we actually like the problem better. But I think what Bill's referring to is, it's not instantaneous that we know that your power is out. It's that call, you call in and your neighbor calls in, and then all of a sudden, you know, it creates a grouping of that area, so it allows the, the engineering group to review the circuit. We send a troubleshooter out. They, they look at, they look at the route, they determine what the problem is. That problem gets sent back to the division and then they roll trucks. I mean, we're, we're, yeah, so that's pretty much the process of, of how, how it goes. And it's been like that forever, but, you know, for, for, for what the mayor's saying, I, I hear, you know, I hear your frustration, and I hear where you're coming from, from a customer service standpoint. I assure you that, and I, and I think Bill is saying the same thing, is that, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at situations that, you know, you know, we felt that we did, you know, and tried to add that extra level of service, and perhaps it wasn't enough. So now we got to go back and we got to kind of look at that because we, we did, when we talked internally, and we knew that we were, you know, the, the issues were coming and the, you know, the power outages were happening, we felt internally that that level of service needs to be specific for Highland Park, and perhaps that is not enough. And I hear your frustration, but I'm sure that's something that not only Bill is director, but we will talk about internally, is how can we make that better? So I assure you, we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
So, so I'm trying to understand something like that. The year is 2014, Brad.
Sure.
You have no way, you don't have like a, a computer map when something goes down in municipality that a little red light leaps and alerts you that you have to wait for us to call you to let you know that there's no power? Okay. I, I, I don't understand how in this century. I just don't understand how in this century, you're relying on your customers to tell you what's wrong with your system as opposed to having something built into your system, even if it's for one little house on South Sixth Avenue, to tell you that you have a problem.
Is there?
No, actually, we don't. I mean, you're, the Fort Kitty Station, Highland Park Edison, all we have is an alarm from the station. That's something in that, the station went wrong, a brake opened up.
A brake opened up. So we get an alarm from the station, we get individual calls, the computer models the circuit that is probably out. But until somebody goes to that station and validates that the breakers open like you would in your basement, we would not know you're out of power enough.
So do your infrastructure upgrades include a computerized work system? Like improve monitoring? I mean, is that...
It could, it could. Again, but, you know, we're, we're hoping to find out what, what they're going to recommend. I can tell you, Ed, I, I don't know what the percentage is, but a large percentage of stations, and also pole-mounted equipment, does go into our computer system. So it'll say, "Okay, well, is the station operating? We may, and we can also operate the station remotely." And then there's the pole-mounted breakers that, that the information comes back through our SCADA system, let, let us know, "Okay, something tripped. We closed. Something tripped and locked out." So we know. Where, what we don't have, and this is quite frankly what we rely on the public for, is we don't necessarily know where the damage is. So when somebody calls and says, "Hey, I got a wide spark in front of my house," that leads us to where the problem is, to fix the problem, and then go with the breakers. But there's, there's a, a large percentage of our, of our system does have a SCADA system where they'll tell us that something has operated. We don't have to go to someplace unnecessarily. Now, the older stations like this, I don't know if one of the recommendations is going to be, "Okay, well, let's at least monitor, not as least again into some kind of computer grid."
So there's a scenario where you basically put this thing back online, and you just sort of hold it in functions the way it's supposed to be, because it's basically going to be newer equipment by newer versions of a 20th century updated product.
No, what I said, but, you know, I went, that's basically... No, 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 no. What I said was, we're going to, we're going to fix what's out there.
Right.
A lot of equipment is going to be upgraded, okay, to the point where we computerize it. That's part of the, the other, we were just looking, and I said, "What do we need to do to do better?"
What you said, is entering out one of the stations that gets marginalized.
Because I haven't seen it before. Which won't come out until the end of March.
But you're actually going to try to find out if that's, or what's going on.
Part of what was in energy strong, I don't know if you guys remember that, you know, I don't know if it was supported or what. Part of, part of energy strong, a lot of that was proposed was to get more computerized equipment out there. So I, I don't know, you know, I don't know how it's going to go through, but that, that was on the table.
Yeah, but since that's not going to be something we're going to be able to investigate, we don't need to put this on board, because it's stabilized as Highland Park. So I don't, a couple of comments, else you're coming?
Yeah, because my, my comment is from a customer service standpoint, that after the first day, we were told that, well, the power went out at 11:40 in the morning or 10:40. We were told that within, like, 6 o'clock, the power was going to be restored. Then we called again, because I called, and we told 6 o'clock. We called again at 7. We were told midnight. Midnight came and went, and it was in the afternoon later than at the next day that we received power. One of the things that I received upon this power was restored to my area was a phone call from one of the cable companies saying that they apologized for the service that was not provided, because I got that from cable business, but that's what we have here. And they apologized for the inconvenience that, that was caused. We then received a phone call from PSENG saying, "We apologize for the inconvenience, and there may be additional outages." None of that was done to us. So we were, again, when it went out for the next nine days, we didn't know what to do. We were all left to the dark. Had you...
Literally.
Literally, had you guys knew that this transformer blew up and that you were having a major problem, that little bit of information, if that was conveyed to our residents, to us, that would've solved a lot of our headaches, and it would've solved a lot of your headaches that you're having tonight, too. Because now your feet's moved out to the fire, and it was a simple and easy communication tool that could've been implemented.
And I appreciate that comment, and I would make folks aware, if you don't know, we have a, a offering called My Alerts, where you can sign up on our webpage and...
Again, you're putting the onus on us. You have to...
Because immediately you have to opt-in for us to detection that your power's still restored.
Well, didn't you just say that after several days that you implemented a 800 number or some kind of... Well, what I'm saying is to be proactive and let us know what's going on, because you guys knew this thing blew up a lot. It blew up, and it wasn't that you fixed the next day.
Well, the original feedback that I got, Frank told me on Saturday night, it said, "Best case, this is based on the operations."
Correct.
Best case, tell me what on, not what we got, best case midnight, that was around 9:30, 10 o'clock. Best case midnight, worst case around noon to follow the day.
Correct.
Okay? That's what we put out to the residents. Okay? And around 9:30 or 10:00 in the morning, we had a brief conversation, exchange of text messages, "Hey, you know, I still look in at noon, because I'm starting to get a little bit nervous." Yeah, you know, give or take, but yeah, basically at noon. Well, guess what? We go down to one of the transformer sites at around 10:00 to 12:00, and they're like, "Gee, things are fine over here. We can keep this line working. It's been a few hours. We gotta get the supervisors out." You know, it's like, I realize that you, you were dealing with an unusual set of circumstances. But then again, the fact that, and I guess Frank this a million times, you know, look, I don't want to pick on the engineers, you know, since, you know, what's the level of engineer here? I mean, you know, if you guys are scratching, then I'm supposed to know what's going on, right? So the fact that your customer service people go, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know who knows what. I don't, I'm not supposed to know who knows what. But I never had a sense, you guys really had a good handle on what's going on, because everyone was scratching their heads, or else this thing wouldn't keep happening. So Elsie's point is exceedingly well-taken, is that if upfront, you say, "This is an extraordinary set of circumstances." I mean, this is, this is really in the big picture level. It's bad enough that you don't know the micro level, because you're not smart, and you're supposed to really know it on house staffs, but you know community is being fundamentally affected the way that traditionally it's not. So now all of a sudden, it's like, you know what? Plan A is not what we do now. We're throwing out that playbook, this is Plan B playbook. It not only includes certain operational measures, it includes certain communications measures, it includes certain customer service measures. It's a comprehensive way of dealing with the problem. That just ain't there, you know? And, you know, you could say, "Well, we had no way of knowing that this is improvising." God knows we had it improvising. You know, so if we get this stuff out, and I don't think, I don't think PSENG is built that way. But if you guys can demonstrate some leadership within the company through that, I think Highland Park will be pretty much grateful. Because this is not an issue that we might have to keep dealing with. And what do I expect that we should have? Now, are there any other comments before we move on to the common stuff?
All right, so you guys were going to talk generically about claims, I think?
I mean, not really generically, other than the fact that, you know, claims, you know, again, we're, we're governed by our tariff, and, you know, claims needs to be handled on a one-on-one basis. I provided the mayor with the, you know, the ability to either get the form online, or you can actually apply online. You can go directly to the page and apply online. I will assure you that a, a claims representative, it's our business assurance group, I assure you that a business assurance group will review the claim and talk with you individually one-on-one. They understand sensitivity here, but also understand we are governed by what our tariff tells us we can and cannot do.
Frank, you don't want to be a big help?
Sure.
You know, Elsie made this suggestion, which is to set offline, but I think it would be helpful. You know, we can certainly print these out, give you some reports or whatever else. Maybe we can arrange some pimes. You know, I don't even want to talk about this workshop later, whatever. Maybe over the next several weeks, we can promote some pimes, or maybe you have somebody from that division or some service rep that's able to, you know, be here, basically to help people, you know, we have to facilitate, you know, locations or whatever. Maybe not necessarily a response to people who have to fill these out, to make it frustrating, it's going to slow the process down, it's going to be rejects. Maybe, you know, this is...
Yeah, it's, it really, I mean, I gotta go back. It really, it's like, it's like insurance. It's the same thing. When you have an insurance claim on a car, when you have an insurance claim on a house, you're not having the insurance agent fill out your form for you.
And I didn't ask that.
Yeah.
Okay, but I got a pretty darn good insurance agent, okay? And when I...
Or people that are quick to claim.
Wait a second. If you're going to go down there, oh, then let's go there. Okay, my basement was destroyed without our Ken and Irene. Okay? I had claims adjusted there in 48 hours. Okay? My insurance company was there for me big time. My guy that I've been with for 20 years made his business to help me at every possible time with every possible pressure.
I get that.
Customer service came to my disposal. I was a one-row guy.
No, I get that. That's a premium you pay to do that.
Okay, well, guess what? We pay something over utility bill every month.
And that's for your service?
Well, no. Well, service hasn't got a definition here, does it? So I don't think it's hard to catch the gender on it, but it's not over here. You guys, if you want to, give it what's transpired here. I was just asked what you can do. So when I came up with something, and now we're ready to get used to it.
No, I mean...
I think that's a process law. Let's hope the people who want to place these claims, I'm not saying you should do the work for them, but I think that one of the things you should do is alleviate some of the pain in this way by at least trying to facilitate...
That I, that I do agree with. We'll, we'll look at that for sure. But to have, to have, to have a representative here working with them to fill out the claim may not happen that way, but let, let me go through the group to see what they can do to alleviate some of that frustration. That I could absolutely get.
Maybe that would be helpful.
I'm sorry?
Maybe we can talk to the...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. Yes.
Are you sure about filling out the claim form online or downloading the form?
You can do either or.
Because that's not what I was told.
Yeah, now, you can do either or. I sent the mayor the link. That'll put you right to the website. It also has a Microsoft and Adobe Acrobat version of a form that you can download. Fill out faxing or emailing, so you have the ability to fax, email.
Yeah, I didn't know faxing, because they specifically told me you can't fill it out online, so...
No, you can. You absolutely can. That link is there.
Well, of course, I know the customer service issue.
But I will look at the, the opportunity and what business assurance can do to help with you. I'm sorry?
Where are the...
Well, I, you know, you know, knowing that Highland Park is, was very computer savvy, you know, I took the approach that, you know, between the, you know, actual posts...
There is digital devices. A lot of people are very tech savvy, very tech...
Yeah.
Comments? Any additional remarks that you guys would like? Yes, the first one, I do want to say, notwithstanding the DVD, I do appreciate your comment, but I, I think this is just a babysit, and it really has to be a term's long term, taking candidly a relative short period of time. But I think that, you know, while this may, hopefully is over, and it's certainly not forgotten, and it's certainly not something I think any of us, unless you need it any time for any reason, nor should have...
Nor do we.
I, I believe that, but, you know, I think we have a basic way to get there, and it's a multifaceted problem. It's not just one aspect of the work, or issue related to electricity. That's the most narrow way to look at it, but it's a much more complex system. Okay, well, thank you very much.
I'll thank you for your time and your patience. We really do...
And I guess we'll have some follow-up and follow-up future, if you would. All right, so should we do the last one?
That's something like the second time I did that. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. I guess technically it never was not in order, but...
Good, honey. How are you?
Okay. So that was item five on the agenda out of like 20. All right, so that concludes the first portion of public discussion. Clerk, can you report on advertising the ordinance authorizing the borough to convey lot to Habitat for Humanity for consideration of passage on, on final reading by title?
An ordinance authorizing the Borough of Highland Park to convey to Habitat for Humanity, Block 61, Lot 25, shown on the Borough of Highland Park tax map, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's a publication or a file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, can I have a motion to take up the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing? Okay, seeing that there is none...
No, there is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Alan, would you please... Oh, wait a second. You got to come up here and...
Okay.
Sorry, we relocated the mic on you.
Al Williams, 219 Harrison Avenue. This is being conveyed to have that free, no change of money or anything. Is that correct?
I believe we got a grant to acquire the property, didn't we?
Um, we...
Or to build the house, should I say?
Yes, we received a grant for full building costs to, to do the project, but the actual lot transfer is going to be for a nominal fee of, like, like a dollar.
For consideration.
Like a dollar, yes.
Like consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so seeing that there's no more public comment, may I have a... Oh, so you took a motion, a motion to adopt public hearing? Okay, so I need a motion to adopt and advertise.
And advertise?
Yes.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilwoman Bro Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welcomeitz?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, can you report the introduction of the amendment of taxi cab fare ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance concerning taxi cab fares and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park 2010 has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bro Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welcomeitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on the introduction of an ordinance amending zoning map for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance concerning the Highland Park zoning map and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park 2010 has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Uh, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bro Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welcomeitz?
Yes.
Okay, on the consent agenda, items 14 through 26, 21479 through 21491 inclusive, the following resolutions: to request approval for 2014/15 CDBG fund allocation, to approve waiver of fees for townwide garage sale, to amend annual salary resolution, to approve professional service agreement for special counsel Jeffrey Serenian, to approve professional services agreement, special planner Phil Caton, to approve taxi operator licenses for 2014, to approve the bills list, to approve final payout to police officer Nicole Young, to approve pay estimate number 17 HNS Construction for the public safety building, authorizing real property tax appeal settlements concerning insurance coverage for the Highland Park First Aid Squad, authorizing a refund of duplicate tax payment for 1603 Central Avenue, and to amend the temporary budget for 2014. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bro Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Minkoff appoints the following: Helen Rovner is the mayor's alternate to the library board of trustees, and Jesse Hughes is the superintendent's alternate to the library board of trustees. I hereby appoint them. Consider yourselves appointed and congratulations. Under open, oh, I need a motion to confirm. I'm sorry, you can't consider yourselves appointed yet. Okay, can I have a motion to confirm these appointments, please?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Substitute borough attorney, consider yourself duly chastised for not catching that. Okay.
I didn't want to interrupt you. You ran a roll.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, open items. A resolution to oppose the privatization of toll collection fees. Can I have a motion, basically, John, would you just briefly explain why we're doing this?
What this does is it would opposes the privatization of Turnpike and Parkway toll takers. They're currently state employees. There's a move to privatize those jobs, and this resolution simply opposes that.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I'd like to do this by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that resolution will be published and sent to the appropriate individuals and organizations. Okay, so now we have up to 15 minutes of public discussion. If there's any additional public comment, now would be a good time to come forward.
We'll speak on 307 Mid-Sullivan Street. You have something here on taxi fares?
Mm-hmm.
Why is there discrepancy between what Highland Park charges from here to the train station in Brunswick? And what Brunswick cab companies charge to bring this to my house in Highland Park?
Because they're separate companies and they're regulated by separate entities. So therefore, the pricing is out of sync.
So each municipality sets...
Assuming that that's the way the ordinance reads in each municipality. I don't know how New Brunswick regulates their taxi fares. In Highland Park, the governing body regulates taxi fares. I don't know who regulates them or if they're just privately devised in New Brunswick or in other places.
Okay. Now, the snow has been very abundant, and the plowing, or the lack of plowing, has become a real problem.
Can you be a little bit more specific? Because I'd have to respectfully disagree with you. I mean, these guys have been in the cabs pretty much 24 hours a day for the better part of the last month, so I can't...
I'm just talking about...
Well, just, I'd like to finish, just so that, so that we're clear. You know, there may be specific locations where there are issues, and I'd certainly welcome hearing those. But to suggest that the streets haven't been plowed, I think would be a gross misstatement.
The sidewalks and the crosswalks.
Well, that's not plowing, that's shoveling.
And when the plows come, after the people have cleared out the crosswalk, the plow comes along and piles it right back up again. And I see one head nodding, so that means he's experienced it too.
No, you're absolutely right, and it's a problem that these massive, or the continuous snowstorms present. Because the plows have to plow, and the sidewalks have to be cleared. But, you know, both the individual homeowners and the borough lacks the, really the manpower to keep up with it.
Well, let me say two things. First, if I could, first thing I want to say is that I just lectured PSE and G for lack of empathy. So the first thing I would like to do is not demonstrate what I just consider to be a grievous error. So, first of all, I'm very sympathetic. To that point, I know the administrator plans to have some follow-up conversations with our public works department, and really for a variety of reasons. First of all, because we want to be responsive, not just to the Universal Access Commission that has raised similar sets of concerns, but to everybody that should have access, because Highland Park is a walking town. So, we certainly recognize that, and it's something that we're going to see what we can potentially do. There's a big however associated with that. If you've been watching the news, which is my source for this, it would appear that in the New York metro area, a typical snow season, over recent memory, produces a winter of about 25 inches of snow. I think right now we're at about 55 inches. So we're more than double the typical rate of snowfall in a given winter. So, and it's not just the amount of snow, it's the frequency with which it's come. I mean, clearly, we've had to deal with polar temperatures, which have not allowed the snow to melt, so there's been no place to put it, and that's only exacerbated the problem. So that's not so much by way of excuse, but I think that what people generally recognize is this is truly an extraordinary set of circumstances. So, you know, it's not by way of excuse, it's really just by way of recognition. And we're certainly going to take a closer look at what we can do to try to balance the issue that you raised with the challenges that these guys have to deal with, which is that we have a finite amount of space in 1.8 square miles, where we can reasonably put all this snow and still be able to make sure that people can function and that people can go out and try to walk normally and safely. So, I'm not telling you that we have a solution today. It's good, it's not perfect, and we want to try to make it better, and that's what we're going to try to do.
I was not trying to, I was simply pointing out the problems that we face.
I'm well aware of it.
And so...
May I make a suggestion?
Please.
And I've said this to the youth leader over at the senior center a week or so ago. The schools were closed because of the snow. Not one teenager came down my street offering or looking for making some money. Why don't we hire these kids?
Well...
Please let me finish. If the property owner doesn't clean their sidewalk, I didn't see anybody coming around and ticketing. There's a patch from Rite Aid, their property, between their exit line and the property line of the house next door. It is a sheet of ice for just that reason. It melts, or it rains on top, and then it freezes overnight. I have to walk into the street so that I can get down to the avenue.
Did you contact the borough to let them know?
I have let them know on three separate occasions. Each time the manager in charge says they have called a company with whom they have a contract, and they're taking care of it. Why don't we utilize these teenagers? They can do volunteer work.
Well, first of all, okay, so...
The property owner, and to use part of that money to compensate the kid for it. They'd be happy, and you'd have a clean sidewalk.
Would that it would be that simple? First of all, we have a system by which we've requested through the schools for students to sign up, either for pay or as volunteers. That system is in place now. As I recall, with the most recent message that we communicated with one of the snowstorms, we specifically said that if you did not have the capacity to shovel snow, please contact us, and we have a list, and we can make these individuals available to you. That's part A. Part B, I'm looking at some statistics here that indicate that the police have been extraordinarily busy trying to get cars that shouldn't have been parked on the streets, either to relocate or get them towed in the extreme because plows couldn't get through. And I can imagine that that's one of the reasons why they may not have had as much time specifically to inspect sidewalks in conjunction with code enforcement, who's also had to deal with a bunch of issues related to the extreme snow. So what I'm saying to you is not my excuse. What I'm saying is that these are extreme conditions. We realize that it does present certain hazards for people. We also say, just as I said to a resident that emailed me and said something very generic like you said to me, and I said, please be specific, he emailed me with three locations, and I believe we followed up with each one of those three locations, one of which was a commercial property, and all those properties were cleared pretty quickly. So, if somebody comes to us and says, there's a problem with snow removal, that's one thing. If you say to us now, is the problem still exist at Rite Aid?
Yes.
Okay, chief, can you please, and Scott, can you please look into that tomorrow at Rite Aid and see what that looks like? I mean, in general, I know that we have some work to do on Raritan Avenue, and I would certainly appreciate it if now that the snow is starting to abate, I don't know that it's all melted. I mean, maybe it's melted, maybe it hasn't, but I'd appreciate if we took a look at the commercial area tomorrow and see what that looks like.
And if you're talking about Raritan Avenue, between 7th and 1st, there's the commercial property at the corner, and the house next door just to put that hardware. That had not been filed as of yesterday morning.
Okay, so we'll take a look at all those tomorrow. That's very helpful.
And your comment about using students was also something we brought up amongst ourselves prior to the meeting. So we are thinking along those lines that, you know, we're, just like PSE and G, we're going to be facing, I think, challenges moving forward that we're going to have to, you know, look to various ways of getting it done. But it will just, and I just, I'm not trying to say we can't do it, I'm just trying to paint an honest picture. If a property owner doesn't do their due diligence, it's, you're going to have, there's going to be snow on there, and it'll be, it'll be a difficult process to get, A, you know, you could find them or whatever, but getting that snow removed, it'll just be a difficult process, so it's, these are some... So, these are going to be some of the challenges we're going to face.
And not only that, we can't compel the teenagers to volunteer or to pay them to do the work. They have to want to do it. We can't just conscript them. You know, we've circulated this list repeatedly. I have a teen advisory council. A number of those students signed up, and they're available, and people have in fact reached out to them and called them. But it's not like it's an army of volunteers that we have, and we have publicized this each and every year through the school.
I guess they're not hungry.
Well, you know what, I'll be fair. I don't know what the reason is, but, you know, they'll do what they'll do, or they won't do what they won't do.
I only know from way back when, my son is now 55, but when he was 13 years old, and it had snowed the night before, and he thought that there would be no school, and he was all ready to go and make some money because his sisters were babysitters and could make money. And then he got more and now he's like, oh, you gotta get dressed and go, and he... All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment or questions?
Alan?
I have something to say regarding the snow situation. I think that our Department of Public Works did a fantastic job, along with our public safety department, in making sure that emergency vehicle had access in and out of Highland Park, and that our public service, our entire public service department, first aid, fire, police, the DPW paved the way to make it great and to, that people have access. However, this year, I heard on the news this morning that this winter season so far, we have had 36 snow days. So we had 36 seasons, 36 snow since the beginning of our winter season. And there's a possibility that we'll be seeing more snow. With that, I also heard...
I'm sorry, can you turn off Elsie's mic?
With that, I also heard on the radio that our state did not have any salt, and that, and that was a part of the problem. And large towns don't have enough salt to go around. Small towns like Highland Park definitely have a problem.
By cat litter, litter, it works very well.
Well, we don't generally spray that out of the trucks.
Yeah, so that can't be sprayed, obviously. But it brings me to a point where I have received phone calls from residents saying that, what are we going to do about the snow? As elective officials and who live here in town, who are property owners, we have the same problems like everyone else does. It snows in our neighborhoods, it snows on our property, and we have the same issues of the snowplow coming and packing it back in after we've done our work. We all have to work together. And one of the issues is that someone says that, well, why isn't the police out there doing their jobs? Why isn't the police not doing this, that, and the other? Well, unfortunately, we had a police officer who was being a good Samaritan. Somebody was stuck, and he proceeded to push the person out. He tried really hard to push the person out, well, he slipped, fell, and wound up in the hospital. So, we, the police department is out there to do their job, and everyone is out there to make sure that everyone is safe. But we have to realize that this is one extraordinary year, and we all have to exercise some patience and some caution as we go about doing what we need to do.
I wanted one more suggestion. I didn't like that. Across the street from me, I live on Magnolia, between 3rd and 4th, there's this large apartment complex with parking space for the residents in the interior. There's only one house on that whole block, and they have a driveway so you can take their cars off. Their side is completely cleaned from the snow because the power goes through there. Why don't we institute alternate side of the street parking? If you can clean it up over there, then get the cars from my side of the street, where we've got all these multifamily houses. It's what, 35-foot thing? You can't get them out. Dig them out when the, when the snow is still soft, once the plow's been through. Move them to the other side, and the next day, the plow can go through and push it out of the way. Push it on my sidewalk, on my, yeah, on my sidewalk, push it over. It widens the street, and it provides some parking spaces.
Yeah, so, first of all, thank you for that. I will tell you that the police and public works after the snow season do plan with the administrator to review the parking ordinances, the location of no parking, the practicality of no parking. The point is exceedingly well taken about driveways. It's very hard to insist that people not park in particular places if they don't have a place to put their cars. So that's one of the things that needs to be considered. Having said that, you know, you just said it yourself. For every person that doesn't mind having the snow plow in their car, or cares if the snow plows in their car, there are a lot of people that get upset when the plows come along and they push the snow onto their sidewalk. So, there's no perfect solution, and we're going to keep working to get an improvement from what we have. But I do need to leave you with this thought, is that overall, you know, when I'm looking at what I'm looking at right here, I have a strong sense that, is there work to be done? Are there more residents that need to be vigilant? Yes. Elsie's points are extremely well taken. These are extraordinary circumstances. It's been an extraordinary winter for Highland Park. And I got to tell you something, all things considered, kudos to the residents, because they're really troopers. I mean, they've put up with a lot from PSE and G, as we just heard. This has been an extraordinary amount of snowfall. To his credit, somehow Donald Rich has managed to keep us in salt and calcium chloride, which I find rather remarkable. So thank you for doing that and all the incredible work that your crew is doing. And the police and the fire and the first aid departments have kept us remarkably safe in the midst of all that. So, you know, all things considered, things are going, I think, at a basic level, things are functioning pretty well right now. I mean, that doesn't mean we can't improve, and it doesn't mean that people shouldn't be more vigilant about moving cars and parking cars where they shouldn't, and getting the snow off their sidewalks and whatever else. But, you know, all in all, I think that, you know, people are managing pretty well considering what's going on out there. And I think that's a credit to the people of Highland Park. Alan, did we cover your questions? You, no, you, yeah. There are no stupid questions.
Only stupid councilmen.
Go ahead. Alan Williams, 319 Harrison Avenue. 1314, where introduction of ordinance amending zoning map for...
I knew you were going to ask about that.
Is this the same thing that the planning board is dealing with? Is this probably different?
As you recall, we changed the zoning over in the Kaplan properties. This is changing the map to reflect that change of zoning.
Is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
See, that was a stupid question, no. That was a good question. That was a very good question. I couldn't resist, Alan. If you weren't such...
You just asked the smarter council people.
If you weren't such a nice guy, you can edit that out of the tape, can't you, Gary?
No.
Of course not. Okay, so we'll now have two minutes for pot shots at the mayor, and then we're going to adjourn. Okay, I decided that that two minutes is two seconds, and it's over. So, that was all the business that we have. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.